So you'll let us know because I think that the recording is still has the, um, the voices. It's just the people at home are not able to hear. So we can, we can move forward so long as we know it's still being recorded. And I'm going to move forward. So there is, um, uh, next on the list, we're, and I should have shared this with everyone. We're going through all the board members and then the administrative staff.
I, I believe I just solved the issue.
Yes.
You're the best.
Thank you. So, uh, I should have shared from the start. We're going through all the board members administration, and then we're coming up with teachers. Okay? So we're going to the next board member, Alicia Bronson. And we're going to ask that Craig have a couple of words of support for the service that Alicia Bronson has had for our board.
Uh, with Alicia's energy and happy warrior spirit, I could have seen her becoming another Dottie. That I, I, I honestly felt that she brought such generosity of heart and of time and a willingness to engage in an honest dialogue that, um, she was just really, really good at. And Alicia was invaluable, even though she was on it for such a short time. Cause she was willing to get on the committee to look at the bond proposal and to discuss. And it really helped to understand it better. And I hope that, that, that the community, uh, well, I'm happy to say that I, I'm informing the community that it's exactly the type of, uh, public servant is that we need. It would be Alicia if she could, she gets involved in all in the future. So a special thank you to her as well, uh, because, uh, like Dottie, she brings all the energy and compassion and concern that, that we need in the community.
Awesome. Thanks, Craig. I, I don't think Alicia had the opportunity to make it tonight. And, um, I would say the same about Alicia's return to help support as I would say the same about Brandon. I forgot to say that earlier, Brandon, you're not out the picture. We still, uh, appreciate all the support. All right. So, um, we also have our last board member who is Scott Baxter. And I don't think Scott was able to meet, make it, but we're going to ask Abby to, um, uh, support words of his service for Penfield Schools.
All right. So, um, Scott came on the board first as an appointed member and then got elected for a term. And I think, and, um, that is, that brought a very unique, um, business perspective, entrepreneur perspective. But I think that was always really helpful to hear that, um, no nonsense, logical approach to contracts and finance and HR. Um, and at the same time, Scott has, um, kids in a district and a wife who's a teacher and brought that, um, that perspective also of how important the education and the experiences for the students. And so, um, the same as everyone else that's gone off the board. I think that we lost some good members and we got some good members. I think we're very blessed in both ways, but I really am going to miss Scott's, um, logical brain. And all three of these that I had to speak about, and Scott especially are very busy, um, business people. And, um, just that sacrifice of time that they gave is appreciated because we know that it was a sacrifice away from their families, um, because it was evenings when they weren't working. So we really appreciate all of that.
Thank you, Abby. And I, um, I would just echo all of what you and Craig have shared about our members, uh, board members who have, um, uh, left a space to be filled by our new members. And that the excitement to get that job done, that we are truly excited about this being an accomplishment, that we appreciate them and we're going to, uh, not miss them. I'm not going to say that because we're still going to be knocking on the door, asking them for some support as we move forward. Okay? So I am going to move in with the administrators now, and I get to talk about the first administrator, which is Shar Phillips. And I think Shar actually joined us. She should be there on the screen in a minute. Um, actually I guess I just gotta have her say something and then her face will show up on the screen. Shar, can you say, uh, hello? So then I can see your face on the screen. Well, she had the link, maybe she didn't link in yet. So.
She's, she's in here. Shar, make sure you take your mute off.
I thought she was here.
She's here.
Yep.
I'm here.
There we go.
Oh, there she is. All right. Hey Shar, I, um, I can tell you how much that, um, I appreciate your wisdom when it came to the transportation and trying to support our kids in our community. And yes, as I've said numerous times to drivers, it is one thing to sit in a classroom or excuse me, work in a classroom with kids who are right there in front of you to where you can work with all type of, uh, issues that they may be having or discipline, uh, disciplinary problems. But to drive a bus and to be safe and to have kids who are sitting behind you and still be able to control that piece and the actual system of transportation for Penfield Schools, your service is truly, truly appreciated. And I know that you and your family, as much as you, um, you're just, you're bleeding green because you're green and white through and through. I felt that after I first met you, and I appreciate the fact that you've given me the support and the dialogue and conversation to, uh, make this first year that became a very difficult year, one that was, uh, very productive. And we will, uh, truly miss you and that we know that this was something that has come about and that we, uh, that you wished that you could stay with us. But we know that again, just as our other board members and administrators, you're not finished. We're still going to be asking you to come back and help support, which I know you've already been doing some of that through phone calls with our new transportation director. So again, Shar, want to say thank you and give you an opportunity to have a couple of words.
Thank you, Kevin. Yes, uh, there are many, many people I will greatly miss. You have a great group of drivers there, and I know they will all do a great job for you. And good luck to our new supervisor.
Thank you, Shar. And I forgot with all the other board members, everybody usually clap after that to give everybody the hey, we appreciate you. But I was, you know, when I get in front of the camera, I kind of get a little, um, I kind of lose my space when I'm trying to think in my thoughts. So thanks again, Shar. So then we go to, uh, teachers. Pam Metcalf was a math teacher that I knew was here. So, uh, I also see where we got Brett Steele and Tom Faber that's going to have a couple of words to speak. So I guess that means Pam must've been a coach also. So I must, I did not realize that. So let's start with you, Mr. Steele.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I was fortunate enough, uh, my first year here at Penfield, 2013, 14. Hard to imagine this is the eighth year already, uh, that I've been here as a Panther. Uh, Pam was our varsity softball coach, uh, when I came on board as the athletic director. And she worked with our softball team for many, many years. Uh, she did a tremendous job, not only mentoring and teaching, uh, students in the classroom, but also on the playing field. Uh, she mentored some of our current coaches who worked under her and who are now carrying on in her, uh, in her tradition. A couple of accomplishments that Pam, uh, had while she was, while I was the athletic director during her tenure. Uh, she had over 100 career victories earned. And she also was our, uh, city coach of the year in softball in 2018. Uh, those are tremendous accolades, but most important, she was, uh, just a terrific, uh, coach and, and mentor to our young people and, uh, was a pleasure to work with. And I've missed her since she's retired and I wish her the very best. I don't know if she's on here or not, but, uh, her and her husband, Brian, uh, I wish the very best as they, uh, um, move on to their next juncture of their lives.
Awesome. Thanks. Appreciate that, uh, Mr. Steele. And then we're going to ask Mr. Faber to also add in as, uh, Pam was a teacher at the high school.
Yep. And, uh, Pam and I started here at Penfield the same year. We showed up the first, uh, board meeting in the summer to, uh, be introduced as we were both hired. Uh, I was just hired as assistant principal at the high school. She was hired as a math teacher. And, uh, so we've been part of the team that helped plan the building of the new high school. She taught math here at Penfield High School 15 years while coaching multiple varsity sports. She served as union president for several years as well. Pam was known to expect a great deal from students in her classes. She worked with them to help them develop their own thoughts and problem solving skills for their benefit. She helped provide a safe environment for them to productively struggle with their learning so they could eventually understand concepts and be successful in math. Over the years, she taught pre-algebra, pre-geometry, algebra, geometry, algebra two, pre-calculus, otherwise known as function stats and trigonometry, advanced placement calculus and advanced placement statistics. So Pam's commitment to student learning, developing those foundational problem solving skills and positive working relationships will be missed by the entire Penfield community. I'd like to thank Pam for her service at Penfield Schools and the positive impact she's had on her students and student athletes. Thanks, Pam.
Awesome. Thanks, Mr. Steele and Mr. Faber. And thank you, Ms. Metcalf. All right. We have, uh, next is Ms. Dawn Stone. I'll remember her from going out and meeting her when the traffic at Dunlap was wow. And so to have to speak about Dawn is Ms. Newbecker.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. So Dawn has served in many roles and has been with our Dunlap, with the Penfield family for years and years, finally landing, um, with me at Dunlap in the library. Her organization and pride, um, that she took in that role, um, made it a wonderful welcoming place. She put more books in students' hands, which is what, what her job was to do. She kept the library stocked. She ordered new books. She had helped us with book fairs. She did all those things that are needed to keep those books in kids' hands. She was always willing to do anything in addition, um, and she thrived. She was always willing to do anything in addition and she thrived and working with our struggling learners, helped recess, cafeteria, everything. Thank you so much for your service, Dawn.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Newbecker, and thank you, Ms. Stone. So we, coming back from the technology, which we do miss, Ms. Luthrop. I just used to call her Susan. So Susan, we're going to have Tammy to speak about Susan.
Hi, Susan. Nice to you.
Hi, Tammy. Can you hear me?
I do hear you.
I miss you guys.
So we totally miss Susan. Susan was our network administrator for a long time. She was there before me for sure. So she was there for a long time. She knew all the stories and she knew how to get that system up and running. And we have missed her dearly. She actually retired last year on January 1st. So she's been living the high life for the last year. And I see all her travels on Facebook and stuff and I'm jealous, of course. But we of course wish her the best, but anytime she wants to come back, she can just jump right in and join the tech team again. We would welcome her with open arms.
I'm pretty happy retired.
Thank you, Susan. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything, but go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for all the years. You know, I had a lot of years at Penfield and before that, the ISD. And it was wonderful working for a school district. And I miss you all, but retired life is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. So next we have Ms. Nina Berry Sylvester. And she was coaching. We're going to have Mr. Steele speak about Ms. Sylvester.
Well, actually Nina wasn't a coach for me. She has been a ticket person for the athletic department for, again, my entire tenure. And I know many years before that for Larry Boyer. She has sold tickets at high school and middle school events in all three seasons, fall, winter and spring. So she worked around the year with us in athletics. And she also is part of our youth girls' basketball league and has been a vital part of that program. Has started that and ran that thing for many, many years. Nina was a tremendous help and benefit and source of information for me when I first came onto the scene here at Penfield in 2013. And someone I've missed seeing greatly the last six months or so since we have not had her presence during this school year at the athletic events. So I wish Nina nothing but the best. Look forward to seeing her around soon when we get through this COVID thing. And again, Nina, thank you very, very much for your service, not only the district, but also to the athletic department and particularly helping me through the years. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Nina Sylvester. So here's a familiar face that it took me a little while to learn her name. And once I learned her name, she left. Ms. Glenn Bill is here and I did see her face. And she is going to be truly missed as a teacher, but Ms. Newbecker, she's there. So we can get some positive words of support for her service.
Of course. So she dedicated her career to Penfield. She is loved by this community. She's, her students had the opportunity to attend the symphony each year. We took busloads of kids. She taught the meeting of the Star Spangled Banner, which I thought was fabulous. Concert upon concert, her students were always prepared. She has shared her love of music with generations of Panthers. Thank you.
Ms. Glenn Bill, would you like to have a quick word?
Sure. And it was 33 years I've been in Penfield and all of them at North Penn, plus Purdy and Dunlap. And it was great. I've had wonderful memories. I can't go anywhere without running into a student. But I hope to be back to help out Blake with the band kids as a volunteer, but I'm loving retirement. We have a two month old baby that I get to hold all the time.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn Bill. Thank you. So our next teacher is Ms. Tracy Allen. And Ms. Newbecker, you're still up to speak on her part. Thank you.
Yes, I am ready to speak on Ms. Allen. She was a dedicated professional and she, like Laura, started her career here in Penfield. And she stayed as a fifth grade teacher the entire time, is my understanding. She also served as a coach. Each year I had families say, hey, I want my child to have Ms. Allen. She had a reputation for high expectations for her learners. And the very first thing I learned when I met Tracy was she said, Sarah, I'm always willing to help. You just name it, I'm your girl. Really appreciated that. And Dunlap isn't the same without her.
Awesome. And I didn't see her sign in. So we are going to say we do appreciate Ms. Allen's years of service also. All right, as we move forward, we have Ms. Jean Grant and Ms. Amy Frost is going to have the opportunity to speak. And I can see Jean is here. So Ms. Frost, if you would.
Jean, we miss you. You really should come back. There's a spot open. Jean is like the true, when you think of someone who's a Penfield person and somebody who cares about the kids. And Jean Grant is your woman. She cared deeply about every child she worked with and expected them to reach their full potential. She would do whatever was necessary to help them do that. And she went above and beyond. If there was a job that needed to be done, somebody had to, anything that needed to be done, Jean would step in. And she never made a big deal about it. Half the things she did, people didn't even know she did them because she just quietly took care of things. She didn't need recognition for it. She would always step up. And she became the official laminating queen because no one else could laminate but her because she knew how to do it. And we haven't laminated since you left, Jean. No one can do it. There's a plaque on the laminator that has her name on it that we made to put on the laminating machine. So we love you, Jean, and we miss you.
So Jean, would you like to have a word to say, please?
Well, retirement was painful at first, but it's getting better. I miss the kids and I miss the staff at Purdy. They were wonderful. They were exceptional. And that's why I wanted to be there and stayed so long.
Well, thank you, Ms. Grant. We appreciate you and your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I said earlier, I thought we were going through, we're just doing it, board members, then administrators, then teachers. Well, I may have missed this because now we're bouncing back to administrators again. And we're going to have Jane Hoddick. I saw her in the picture, my neighbor. So we're going to let Trevor speak on her years as building principal.
Jane Hoddick, all those chops you busted, now you're going to get your comeuppance. You came to the wrong meeting, lady. I'm telling you.
Don't roast her.
Screen went black. Come on back. All right. Well, you know, Jane retired from Penfield this past summer. And she's going to continue to be one of our most recognizable and appreciated Panthers for many years to come. So they are going to get taller and older. And I know she already has from B High taller than her. But I know for a long time, she's going to be getting recognized out there on the streets. And Jane served education for 34 years in Battle Creek Public, Marshall, Bellevue, and the last 15 here in Penfield. In her teaching career, she taught grades two through five at Battle Creek Public, Marshall and Penfield while providing some administrative duties at Bellevue and here at Penfield. She's best known as Purdy's principal that helped establish the affectionate term for her caring and passionate team, Purdy People, which we'll live on. And we also know that Jane is just, what she's really known for is relationships that she helped build with staff, students and families. And I think you can ask anyone, they're going to tell you Jane is tough. She's not going to cut you any slack. She's going to tell you how it is, but they also know she'll bend over backwards to help anyone. She'll always reach out to help even those that are hard to reach. And she'll be the first one to give a hug or high five when a child succeeds. Jane did provide a update for us. She helps support and establish a parent co-op that is working with virtual and homeschool families. And she's also taken a role as a clinical instructor at WMU, supporting and supervising teacher interns, which is perfect. So from all of us, thank you, Jane. And anything that you have for us?
I got nothing. I'm kidding. Thank you so much, all of you. That was so nice. Thank you, Trevor. I like that I was known as tough. It's kind of funny because working in the co-op, that's what some of the kids do me and my reputation. Right away, they come in, they go, we heard you're tough. Anyway, thank you so much to everybody at Penfield, a great place to be. And anyone who is there is very fortunate. They're going to have a great education. And welcome to all the new board members and all the new staff members. And everybody in Penfield right now, thank you for working so hard for our kids right now, especially. You guys are killing it and it's tough. I know. Hey, I'm just going to say that I announced my retirement before COVID. And when it hit, I questioned whether I should still be there helping, but y'all are knocking it out of the park. You don't need me. I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
So another administrator, Michelle Hersing, who was at the middle school. And Jerry Mueller is going to add some positive words for the years that she has of service.
So. So I agree with Trevor. I thought this was an opportunity for us to tell stories. But when I had to turn my stories into Kevin, he said, you can't say that. You can't talk about that. And so I went back and my wife has become my Jiminy Cricket, my conscience. And it is a great honor to look at Jane and say, oh, I know two stories, but you know, I was assigned Michelle. So Michelle, Michelle had 23 plus years with us here at Penfield and years with other neighboring districts. But I met Michelle about 14 years ago. And at that time, she was the PEA president. And she was just a great mentor for me and helped welcome me into the Penfield family. But with purpose. And I learned two things quickly. First, Michelle's intensely proud of Penfield, not just as a longtime staff member, but as a mom. Her children graduated from here and she was just a great role model for folks to be able to see the pride that is here. And the other is that she was knowledgeable resource, not only in the community. And I had grown up nearby, but there was, as a small business owner, she had so many stories for me when I first got there. Then she became assistant principal and later principal. And we had several dialogues in her office, sometimes opposite sides and sometimes knee to knee. But it was all enjoyable. So I miss those, Michelle. It was always fun. Her expertise with students with IEPs and especially the unique characteristics that make up any middle school student has really helped lead the middle school. And for those of you that didn't know, they were a reward school under Michelle's leadership. And that's a big thing for the Michigan Department of Education. Michelle, we miss you. You can be confident that you did lay down a path that not only honored tradition, but you know, it embraces the future as well. To all the retirees, you know, and Michelle, as I reach out to you, congratulations. You've certainly paved the way for those that are going to follow you. So Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
So Michelle, this is your opportunity. Hey.
Hey. Like Jerry said, 23 plus years with Penfield, nine years with other districts at other times before I came to Penfield and landed in my home. Little did I know when I decided to retire about two years ago, about a year and a half ago, that what was going to happen in the meantime, but no regrets. I echo the sentiments of several of the retirees. Retirement is awesome. Do it as soon as you can. I'm having a great time. We've done some traveling amongst the COVID. We're looking forward to a whole lot more once this is over or at least resolved a little bit. But we're having a great time and the freedom is wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate my years in Penfield.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. So we're now going to make a shift in with bus drivers, our transportation drivers. And we have a Crystal Collins, a Margaret Stacy and a Tracy Wixson. And I got to tell you with these three drivers have left us and retired, that there was a huge hole, as I mentioned earlier, but in transportation when they left, that we had to start with trying to fill these slots with getting drivers to be just as competent as they were and as caring for our kids as they were. And I don't see, I don't see Ms. Collins or Ms. Stacy, but I think Ms. Waxon, excuse me, Waxon, that she is actually on the line. And if she's not, I will make sure to make this comment. She was always, I would go to away athletic events and she was there. And it was, I mean, from the Ben Harbor basketball with the boys' basketball, she's there. And I'm like, oh, my gosh. And then I run into her again at a different event to where it was always like, okay, now we can get this sport going. Because she made it a point, or I made a point, that we would touch bases and talk about our kids at Penfield. So these are three drivers that we will truly be missing as we move forward with our Penfield Schools Transportation Department. So wish them the best for their retirement. All right. So we're going to switch back to teachers again. And I know I saw Leah Hereoff, I did see her. And we're going to have Tom to actually make some comments about her years of service here at Penfield.
Yeah, so leaving. Good to see you, Lee. Lee came to us to Penfield High School from Quincy Schools. I know she'd been in a few schools prior to that. I don't know all of her history. And I couldn't remember exactly how many years. I want to say in the neighborhood of eight to 10 years that she taught art here at Penfield High School. She taught art one, art two, three, four, and even taught a sculpture class. She had connections with the Art Center of Battle Creek and all of that college, both of which led to additional opportunities for kids to engage and explore. She helped develop the Art Club and the Penfield Arts Spring Showcase. The Art Club met weekly to create additional masterpieces and share their talents with the school. And the Penfield Arts Spring Showcase allowed her students the opportunity to display their creations with members of the community who wanted to see their work as well as those who came to enjoy the annual spring play. She worked tirelessly to help students create works of art and have an opportunity to share their talents at the showcase as well as in hallway display cases. And Lee developed positive working relationships with her students, especially those she had for years, as well as her colleagues on the Penfield High School staff, her hallway neighbors I know miss her, even though they're welcoming her replacement, Matt Kirkland, to the hallway. But obviously, when we bring the kids back in the building a week from today and those teachers look down in the corner and they're not going to see Lee there anymore. And though she has probably left the largest physical presence of any educator in the district as the painted ceiling tiles created by her seniors over the years are throughout the building and leave her looking down at our students and our staff on a daily basis. So she has truly left her mark. So her dedication and commitment to her students will be missed. Congratulations, Lee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee, would you like to have some words?
Yes, I really do miss the kids, but it was a good time to retire. I think I will always want to teach. Now I'm at the Art Center teaching and I was. Now I'm at the Art Center teaching and I was going to have more classes in my own shop. Hopefully that will pick up more because of the COVID now. And so I will never stop teaching. I don't think. I love it. But I do want to do some traveling too. So.
Thank you. All right. So we go from the teaching ranks to running the district. Jeannie Rude from Central Office and Gina is going to share it. I gotta tell you, when I met Jeannie and we got to talking from Bloomingdale, Michigan, all the way over, it's a small world with the same friends and family. So, and Gina.
I think running the district, that was probably a great introduction there, Kevin. I do love to talk about Jeannie. She was here at Penfield for 25 years. And when we talk about Panther pride, as we've talked about the other retirees, I'd say Jeannie's right up there in the top with Panther pride and just the pride that she has for Penfield, for the community as a whole and for the school and just making sure that we are doing everything fiscally responsible and that we could just get the best possible services for our kids and our staff here. And as if we asked any of the other administrative assistants and/or really just any staff, Jeannie was kind of the go-to person. If there was an issue, she was one that could help us with a spreadsheet or with a PowerPoint presentation or certificates being made. And all the way down to fixing the copiers to, I mean, you name it, you needed help with it. You could go to Jeannie and she'd be able to be right there and help. She, it didn't matter what the, what the task was, what anybody needed. She was definitely there to help and willing, even if she couldn't, she would find out and she'd put processes together. And she would just help. I just, I can't thank her enough for that. She was also one, when I came to the district about seven years ago, that I could go to Jeannie and ask her about a purchase or a procedure or something that we had, had happened in the past. And she could tell me where it was. She could give me the backup. She was right there with that. So I definitely appreciate it. It made my transition into Penfield very easy. I'd also like to thank her during COVID last year, March, when we did the initial shutdown. She was definitely an integral part in the business office, keep moving. She was the one person that actually came into the office. She is one, I'll go back. She's one that definitely would keep the office sparkling, clean and disinfected. So we appreciate her for that and we probably could use some of that now. But definitely she was one that came in during COVID and kept it going and put procedures in place to have that mail cleaned and open and just kind of how it worked and getting that information back out to the building. So we didn't miss a beat during that time while, while we were shut down. And lastly, I'll say she definitely kept us fed well. She, if any of you have been to any of our board meetings, and usually during this time, we'd have some yummy treats like cupcakes or her famous carrot cake at these meetings. So being virtual, it's kind of a little bit different here, not having those treats. But she definitely kept us fed well and baked in for any potlucks or party planning or anything like that. So Jeannie, we miss you a lot and you'll be greatly missed. Thank you for all that you did for us.
Awesome. Jeannie, you have a couple of words you'd like to say? I know she's there. She's working on the mute button. Um, let's see. I know she's there.
I don't think she sees the mute button. In the very bottom, you'll have a microphone. It's a red circle. Click that. No? Tane, can you unmute her? Are you able to?
No, I can't. I don't know if Jackie can. I think Jackie is the only one that can.
Yeah, I can't either. I just tried. I cannot. Okay. Well, I tell you, we have a couple of more people, Jeannie. And if you figure that out, then you'll pop up on the screen and say, okay, I'm here. And then we'll.
Okay. And Gina text.
So our next person is.
She sent me a text. She just said, she can't like to work, but thanks. Thank you to everyone. And sorry, we couldn't have the carrot cake.
Oh, and I, and that carrot cake was there when I first came on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie. So our next person is Ms. Pat Bennett. And that is going to be Ms. Newbecker.
So Pat, she started as an aide many, many years ago. She helped in the office a lot, lunch recess. She wore so many hats. And as all of our Dunlap family, willing to help in any way that she was asked. She has two special talents though, that I'd like to speak about. The first one is that she would make everybody feel welcome. If you were coming to Dunlap for the first time, she made you feel welcome, just a real gift in that regard. But the one that I especially appreciated is that she was our local masseuse, a talent that we all appreciated. She was the absolute perfect person to help you rub that knot out. She, she, she knew what she was doing and it was, it was amazing. So we really miss you, Pat. Especially for that part. Hope you're loving retirement.
I don't see Pat on the screen, but we're giving her, thank you for her years of service for Penfield. And Krista Beerbaum, who is also one of the guidance counselors that was among the team from when I first came on board in that team of guidance counselors doing so many things. She is going to be recognized for her years of service with Sarah Taylor.
All right. So the one thing that I will always be thankful for is that the first time I met Krista was when I started in the middle of the school year, which is no easy feat to do. And she showed me the ropes and helped me to feel at home at Dunlap and in Penfield. So I am forever thankful for that. Throughout my time there, I enjoyed the different spellings of her name by the kids and adults. She also represented, while she was a counselor, K2 and also at Dunlap throughout her time at Penfield. She represented Penfield through organizations such as Michigan School Counselor Association, which was great. She brought humor to our student support meetings and solid ideas that were in the best interest of children. She was great at forming relationships with students and their families and frequently knew a lot about families as she had siblings. She would also bring a lot of things back and teach the staff and all of us when she would bring them back from conferences and things like that. So she will definitely be missed.
Awesome. And Krista, I think she is there. And it's an opportunity for a couple of words that you would like to say based on your retirement?
I'm here.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Sarah, for your kind words. That's very kind of you. I, my last in-service day at, or in-school day at Penfield was March 13th. And what I miss the most is not being able to say goodbye to the students and all the kids that I had built relationships with. But I am loving retirement and I've started teaching at Grand Valley graduate students who are interning as school counselors. So it's been amazing.
Awesome. Thank you for your years of service at Penfield Schools. And with a teacher, also Ms. Patrice Ott, art teacher, and Ms. Taylor, if you would please.
Yes, Patrice taught art, K2, and then I became familiar with her at Dunlap. And she clearly had a passion for what she taught. And I know that she's traveled a lot and studied art and done a lot of things in that regard. And she brought that to the classroom with the kids. Students did much more than just make a project and take it home in her class. The times that I saw, that I observed, she had students making things and they were learning about artists and they were learning about history and they were learning literacy with it. I know she had a lot of books that she would bring into her art classroom, which it was truly amazing. You are definitely missed, Patrice.
And I know Patrice is there, so she has an opportunity if she would like to have a couple of words here?
Yes, thank you, Sarah. And I hope you're doing well in your new position. I really appreciate Jane welcoming me into the Penfield family 11 years ago. I had just moved from Rochester, New York, and it was quite the shift of culture and climate. And we had a wonderful nine years together, part-time, and then going on to full-time. I really miss the students, but I enjoy retirement and it's a wonderful time for me to be creative for a change. So thank you very much, Kevin. It was wonderful meeting you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, we appreciate you and your years of service for our Penfield Schools and our students and community. And we have Mr. Dan Beach, coach, and we're going to have Mr. Steele, if you would please.
Thank you. Dan was, wore many hats here. He was a parent first when I first arrived on the scene at Penfield. And for the last several years, he was our varsity girls soccer coach. He also helped out with our boys' soccer program. And he was a parent of three daughters, Kayla, Kelsey and Kara, who were all student athletes here at Penfield, playing multiple sports, he and his wife Wendy. I know Dan is enjoying his retirement. I haven't spoken to him for a while, but just want to say thank you to him for not only his service to our athletic programs over the years, but also his being a parent and a supportive member of the Penfield community for, for many, many years. So wish him the best of luck in retirement and hope to see him soon.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Dan Beach. I don't, I didn't see him on the link, so we're giving that appreciation. And I would, I would end with this note that in a couple of previous districts I've been in, there has been a retirement luncheon that is put together and any teachers, administrators, board members, they all would come in and they would have this opportunity to regather. And it was always a fun opportunity to do that luncheon. So I would say that's something that we need to put on the to-do list. And then we'd only have to find someone, a couple of retirees to help us with that. And I see that we still have people on the screen. I will be reaching out to some of our retirees and asking them if they would help with organizing that piece. It's usually done in the spring. I see Jane got out of there quick. So with that being said, let's just turn the camera off. I see with that being said, that we do appreciate each and every one of our retirees and all the people who have served for our Penfield Schools. And at this time, you can log off and, oh, wait.
Hold on.
That's right.
Give them a second, Kevin.
That's right. That's right. There was Jackie. I'm sorry. Go ahead and say again, President Wolfensberger, what did you say, Jeff?
Keep them on for just a second. I'd like to ask any other board member if they would like to.
Yes. Yes. Good point.
No?
Yep. Actually, this is Dana. I, I, I just want to give a special shout out to Mrs. Barry. She brought basketball into our home.
And to so many young girls. And I just really appreciate when there is a strong woman helping little girls become strong women. So thank you, Mrs. Barry.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
Anyone else? I very much appreciate it, Kevin. I think you're going on here on behalf of the board and the Penfield community. Thank each and every one of you for going above and beyond to help make Penfield what it is today. We apologize, this is a little informal. We tried to make this happen for you guys in person so we could, we could do the traditional punching cookies. As a thank you, I would like to be personal. We have gifts for you guys. Those of you that are somewhat local to Battle Creek, I will be hand-delivering those gifts to you in the next couple of days. My thank you once again for, for all your service and help.
Awesome. Thanks again. All right. So you can, you go ahead and tell them, Jeff, they can log out or they can stay.
Now, at this time, we're going to ask you guys, go ahead and log out. And we will continue with our, our board meeting. But thank you guys very much.
Administrators also, you can log out. We, we're going to be, when I say administrators, you know, still got the cabinet if you want to hang out. But yeah, Brad, if you gotta go, you can go. All right, sir. All right. Very nice. Very nice.
Couple more here.
Yep.
That was very nice. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks for all your hard work on that, Jackie, with making sure that we were reaching out to have them also attend. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. Looks like we're good to go, guys. Thank you. 5.03, transportation cameras.
Oh, yes.
Oh, that's right. 5.02. I forgot about that one.
Recognition of school board members.
Yes. So it is recognition of school board members month. And from the ISD, we have received some communications that we'd like to share. And that I share based on the fact that this is a tremendous job and undertaking for board members. And therefore is why we're getting information that comes from the ISD in support of. So this message is from Dr. Terrence Lunger, who is the superintendent at the Calhoun County Intermediate School District. On behalf of the Calhoun Intermediate School District Board of Education and staff, I would like to thank you for the continued commitment that all of you make in the leadership you provide to the students, staff and community of your local school district. The effort and dedication that is required to serve as a successful school board member is significant. And is the nearly 24,000 students who attend school and Calhoun County's 12 local school districts are indeed fortunate to have school board members like you setting policy and ensuring that all children succeed. That is the message from the superintendent at the ISD, Dr. Lunger. And there's also a resolution that is sent from the ISD that I would like to read at this time. The Calhoun Intermediate School District Board of Education, Local School District Board of Education Recognition Resolution for January 2021. Whereas the Board of Education of the constituent school districts in Calhoun ISD have renewed their commitment to ensure all children succeed and failure is not an option. And the board members voluntarily make a personal commitment of countless hours and energy to that goal. And whereas the Board of Education understands the need to be creative and adapt to an ever-changing and challenging political, social, regulatory and economic environment while protecting valuable programs for students. And whereas school boards play an important and vital role in supporting an education system that is the foundation upon which Michigan's economic, social and intellectual capital and future is built. And whereas the board decisions affect the present and future lives of children and set the direction to prepare our students to be competitive around the world, ultimately affecting the lives of 1.47 million Michigan students and more than 14.1 billion in educational investments. And whereas the Board of Education encourages tradition and non-traditional partnerships among and between local school districts, intermediate school districts and unique community, business and agency organizations that will better assist them in helping to create success for their students. And whereas the individual citizens that are members of these boards of education have a strong commitment to creation of safe, caring and enrich- have a strong commitment to creation of safe, caring, and enriching learning environments that ensure that our communities are strong and nurturing. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that during January School Board Recognition Month, the Calhoun Intermediate School District Board of Education celebrates and commends the commitment, leadership, creativity of the individual school boards of education in Calhoun County, presented and adopted January the 7th, 2021, and is signed by the Board President, Secretary, Trustees, Vice President, and Treasurer. This is a true opportunity this month to let our know, let our members know that they are appreciated. And if anything, this work is never-ending. Thank you to our board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Alright.
Alright, now on to 5.03, transportation cameras.
Yes, sir. Hey, we have been looking over the past year for cameras on our buses because of the video feed and because of the actual company. We have what was called Angel Track and we had what was called some type of Panasonic. It was two different systems that were just kind of plugged in on the school buses. And, and I gotta tell you, the work that Shar and Jerry, the mechanic, were doing to try to keep the videos up and going was to where they were trying to save a lot of district funds in order for that to occur. What we found was some were working, some were not. Some of the cameras, you'd have to call the company to get an actual feed of what occurred on the bus. And some of the cameras were given a feed that was being recorded from two weeks ago compared to three other cameras saying it was that day, that hour. So, it was not a good system. So, what is being brought for purchase is a system that is into the 20th century, should I say, to where the cameras would cover all the inside of the bus and one camera that's over the driver that also covers the front of the bus all the way around to the doors. So, that is why the cost is what it is at this point. But it would be, it is really needed in order to move forward with supporting our students and families in Penfield right now. So, we're asking for an action on the proposal because it's 41,000 and some odd dollars.
Eleven dollars and 20 cents, sir.
That's it. So, it is an action item, but we are available for questions about. Oh, we did get a, what's it called? A, all of our cabinet. And we also had Tammy checking into the cost and the actual software. We had a presentation that was given as to how the cameras would work and how well we would get recordings and be able to keep up with things that are occurring on the bus. So, that is, that is a request for support.
So, if I make a motion, then we can have discussion after that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make a motion, Abby, the administration's proposal to purchase the bus camera system.
Thank you, Abby. I would need a second to continue. I will second that motion. Thank you, Sarah. Open for discussion.
Superintendent Simmons, was there, were there any other bids or were there any other systems with that?
Yes, and the other bids were quite higher because of the quality of this company. The REI, and I might even be able to get Tammy to speak more on how the, she does a listserv that goes out to a number of the other technology school in the districts directors. And this was one that was recommended and that's why we went back and took a look, but the others were quite higher. Tammy, could you, could you share?
Yeah, sure. When this was first brought to me by Kevin, we were kind of in the midst of looking for our new transportation director and Shar was on her way out. So, I started by going to our, my listserv that pretty much covers all of the tech leaders in the, in the state and said, you know, who's using what? And at this point, we were using Angel Tracks and I know that we had gotten a bid from them on what it would cost to do this and it was quite high. So, when I did that with the tech leaders, they pretty much told me, don't go with Angel Tracks and gave me lots of reasons why. And then this company, REI, was the one that surfaced as everyone was very happy and pleased with. And that they were, not only was it more affordable, but they're also very present after you get the system. Like, if you need help, they've got somebody 24/7 who's over in, you know, Omaha, Nebraska. I don't have to call another country or anything like that to get service or to wait. So, they have excellent service. Then, when we hired our transportation director, he actually was very pleased about that because that was what he wanted and what he was used to. So, that kind of helped a little bit. When we did our pricing with REI, they are part of a consortium bid. And so, we were able to use that as our pricing so that we didn't have to do formal RFPs. But we did talk to several other companies as well.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Mr. Simmons, I think where you're going with that, my assumption is there's gonna be some sort of monthly subscription cost? Software?
Go ahead, Tammy.
Actually, it's not a subscription. How it works is you have the, the cameras in the bus, the buses, and the cameras have a, a hard drive. But then, when the buses come into the bus garage and they come in contact with the wifi, it does an automatic upload to the REI system. And the software and everything else comes with it. It's not a subscription-based at all. It's, it's, it's a one, like, the price that you see is, is what we're gonna be paying. You can also physically go and get the hard drives out of the cameras and look at it that way. But then, they have a very easy-to-use system that is cloud-based where we can go and, and look at all of that video as well.
Hey, Tammy. Tammy. Does that system also come with GPS tracking?
It can, and yes, it, it does have that. And to what it's, the only thing you have to know is that when they're out, it's, it's not going to send video. You'd have the GPS tracking.
Right.
Video sent at that point.
In case of emergency, though, we could tell right where our buses were at any time.
Correct.
And I don't know if I missed it. Was there information sent out to us prior to this? Did I just miss a packet somewhere or?
It is an attachment on the agenda, Tim.
Okay.
A proposal for it from REI.
Well, I'm talking about more, more in-depth information of the system, the company, price comparison with other companies. Just general information on, that you'd have for a contract vote.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that, we go through that process and, and kind of get down to what we think is the best one and bring that to you. And there's kind of a magic number in the, the state of Michigan where, and on our board policies where when it's over a certain amount that we need, we like to bring that to the board and let you know what's going on because it is a bigger amount. So, we, I mean, we can certainly get you, you know, the technical specifications and that kind of thing. I can send that stuff to you. But we, we try to go through all of that and we get through all the weeds before we bring it to you.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I just, you know, if we're gonna vote on a, almost a $42,000 check that we're gonna write, I, I personally would like to see something else that, don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Kevin, while we spoke about this, just to clarify, this is out of some savings of the transportation. Already, so this isn't coming from somewhere else. This is savings through the COVID, savings of the transportation.
Yep, that's correct.
And Mr. Simmons, I just wanted to, I just wanted to interject to that. This was already part of that budget that the board approved in December. So, we've already earmarked this amount of money out of that budget. So, the budget that you've seen in past, this is part of it. So, it's not in addition to.
Thanks, Angina. And, and, and Tim, there's also a website that is up in the corner of the actual order, the quote, to where that's gonna give a lot of video and a lot of, this is what the company is and how the cameras work. But the, but as, as Jeff has shared and Gina, this was just like adding a bus, just like getting the vans. These were things that were already put in the budget that would say that we'd already have paid. It's just that we just got it down to this amount and all the work that Tammy has done with our team to bring it to this point.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I was just gonna add, I think this is one of those crossover things that we had talked about a couple of times in the, you know, in the other board. And we probably could have talked about it again last week, but didn't think about it.
Good point, Abby.
Any other questions? Go ahead and move forward with a vote, Sarah.
Okay, Sarah Jones, I vote yes. Craig Corpola?
Aye.
Dana Wells, Jenny?
Yes.
Jeff Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Tim Wood?
Yes.
Abby Green?
Yes.
With seven yays, the motion passes. Moving on to 5.04, superintendent goals. We'd like to welcome Jay from M A S B. Welcome, Jay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, Jay.
Good evening, Jay.
Good to see you all.
You didn't have to drive down tonight, huh?
It was a short, it was a, it was a short commute from my, my, my kitchen to the, to the home office here.
Good deal. And a second later, you were this.
That's right. That's right. So, hello to all of you, some familiar faces, some new. For those of you that I haven't met or talked to before, my name is Jay Bennett. I'm the Assistant Director of Executive Services for the Michigan Association School Board. I am a former board member myself, having served on the Grand Ledge School Board and also the East Reese School Board. So, I've been right where you are as well. Kevin asked me to come out tonight and help with some goal-setting. So, how would you like to proceed?
I would think, I was gonna go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask Abby for help. I'm the first to say, I, I have no idea. This is the first time going. So, Abby, can you, can you help us out here?
Sure. So, Jay, I think that, were you hoping to do a little bit of training tonight as well? Or just goal-setting and get it done?
Just goal-setting. We're gonna do the training on Thursday night.
Got it. So, I think for tonight, what would be good would be to, Kevin has proposed some goals. And then hopefully, everyone's had a chance to look at all of the sections of the previous evaluation. I noticed last year, the goals that we set up, we had linked them to parts of that evaluation tool. So, they were, they had superintendent goals for fiscal year 2020 had them linked right to us. Do you have that also? Kevin, do you know what I'm talking about?
I do, and.
The district plan, Abby? I emailed.
Yeah, I'm looking at a document and I don't, I thought it was our final one. It was out on the shared drive. It said superintendent goals for the school year 2020.
It is, and I emailed it to everybody Thursday.
Yeah, I thought that was the one you did.
Along with our 2020 goals.
Do we want to end up with something like that, right?
Jay, you can help us out with that. I'm gonna assume so.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the main focus, so the goals that we're talking about tonight, and we'll talk more about this on Thursday when we talk about evaluation. So, when we talk about evaluation, the main focus of the evaluation is the evaluation instrument or the tool itself. And we'll talk about that on Thursday night. The other portion of the evaluation is based around student growth. And then the third part of the evaluation is progress towards goals, okay? That progress towards goals area, those goals should be goals that are either derived from the school improvement plan that every district has, the strategic plan, which you have, or some combination of those and then possibly some goals that the Board of Education have set specifically for the superintendent. So, if there's a particular area, I'll just pick an example out of thin air. So, it's say communication. If the board, after the evaluation process or at the beginning of the planning process like we're doing tonight, if the board has decided that, you know what, Kevin, we'd really like you to work on communication. We think that this is an area where you can improve. These are the things we'd like to see. Then, we can talk about writing a communication goal for the superintendent. The key to this, though, is that because there are, you know, a vast majority of what you expect of your superintendent is already covered somewhere in that evaluation instrument that we're gonna talk about on Thursday night. So, if we add additional goals on top of the evaluation instrument, we just want to make sure that they make sense, that it's not repetitive to the things that are already in our, in the evaluation instrument and that we're not burdening our superintendent with not only being responsible for making sure that they're doing everything that's in the evaluation instrument, but then 15 or 20 goals on top of that. So, we try to keep it manageable. We try to stick with two, three, maybe four goals that we're looking at above and beyond what's expected in the evaluation, student growth, etc. So, Kevin sent forth to me tonight, he sent four goals, one for each of the four areas that you have identified as part of your strategic plan. So, for your strategic plan, you have four areas. One around academics and programs, one on communication slash community engagement. The third was facilities and operations, and then the fourth was learning environment. And so, Kevin wrote a goal for each of those areas as to the, you know, the things that he would be focusing on for the next year during your evaluation cycle that then tagged back to those four areas in the strategic plan. So, having said that, I think that where we could start is, is we take a look at these goals, make sure that they are within what you as a board are kind of thinking makes sense. And then see if there's anything that we need to get some clarification on from Kevin as to, you know, kind of what he was thinking would be good indicators of growth and success in, you know, in these goal areas. So, you know, the one part is talking about the goal, but then the other part is talking about how to be as a board judge as to whether or not progress is being made towards this goal, okay? A lot of times, we talk about goals, we talk about making sure that they're smart goals. And by smart, we're talking about something that is specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-based. So, we want to make sure these goals are specific. We want to make sure that they are measurable, that it's something we can actually measure. You want to make sure it's realistic that within this evaluation cycle, we'll be able to see some growth and some achievement towards this goal. You want to make sure that it's relevant, that it makes sense to us as a board, that it's attached to something like our strategic plan, that it's not just some random thing that we're expecting Kevin to do. And then time-based, then the time-based for us is going to be over this evaluation cycle, okay? So, do we all have in front of us the second draft of superintendent goals for Kevin Simmons, January 2021?
I, I'm struggling with my feed and every time I try to pull up anything except the Zoom call, you lose me.
Okay.
Is there any way to share it on the screen?
I can share it on the screen, absolutely. So, let me see if it will allow me to, okay, see here. Okay, are we seeing it now? Oh, wait, here it comes.
Thank you.
There you go, Jay.
Okay, so, that first district goal statement is around your superintendent performance or is around your district improvement plan. We will improve student performance in all curricular areas, meet the needs for social, emotional growth and stability for all. So, that's your academics and programs goal. Under that, you have one, two, three, four, five. You've got six priority objectives. So, the first priority objective was. So the first priority objective was vertical and horizontal alignment of K-12 curriculum. It was improve college and career readiness. The third was develop and align district-wide multi-tiered systems of support. Implement proactive professional development and coaching and trauma-informed practices. Increase student competency in providing comprehensive instruction in a virtual environment and improve early childhood educational program. For this particular area, Kevin chose the one working on increasing staff competency in providing comprehensive introduction or instruction in a virtual environment. So Kevin, why don't you give us a little bit of feedback as to why you picked this goal and what you were thinking would be some measures of growth in this goal?
Yeah, my reasoning for picking this, this point was that our situation with teaching virtually because of the COVID situation is not going to go away through the remainder of the year. And we will need to make sure we prepare for virtual learning that could occur in the fall because we don't want to lose students because there are still parents who may say they still want their child to be virtual. Because right now, we have a situation in which there are some reports and some research out that we will still be in the same situation trying to get all 80% of the people vaccinated by the time we get into the summer. And now they're talking about it could go through September and October. So it's also a thought the way some of the districts around us have an alternative school. And with their alternative school, they're utilizing that opportunity to offer virtual learning for their high school and their middle school students. Well, we don't have an alternative school, so we need to think along the lines of, which is the creation of, a virtual opportunity without having an actual alternative school. So it is an alternative opportunity. But there are some things that are being discussed, even as of today. I've had a couple of the districts in Battle Creek, or should I say the other three districts, are asking if we want to look at the possibility of one district actually utilizing the virtual, but the district continues to get the funding for the students. And that would be shared cost for the teachers who would teach the virtual learning. And then all four districts, and then it's just choosing which district would house the actual students, teachers, should I say, for that virtual program. So this goal is more than just the, we need to make sure our teachers know how to how to increase their competency as much as the district as a whole, trying to be thinking bigger picture in case this situation lingers through the summer into next fall.
So Kevin, would it make sense to word this so that it reflects more? It sounds like you're talking more like developing a plan or an approach to the virtual learning, something a little more comprehensive than just staff competency? Is that, is that what you're talking about?
That is correct.
Should we word it that way? Maybe I'm asking Jay this question.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take some notes here, right here in this document in red. And we can then go back and take a look and determine how we want to reword it potentially.
And then my second question would be what, I didn't really hear any like measurements, objective measurements?
Yeah, so that would, that would be my next question for Kevin would be what are some of the ways that you think we would measure progress in the school area?
Well, I hadn't gotten that far yet, so let's see if we can think of what that would look like. So.
I can think of a couple.
Yep.
I've always been, I mean, so one of the first things I've thought about was some established.
Hey, Jay, I, I have a question. Abby, I, I really appreciate, I like where, I, I get what you're saying. It'd be nice to quantify it.
Yeah.
Jay, is the questions that Abby's asking right now, the same as what I'm thinking, will we cover these on Thursday in the training?
No, the training on Thursday is gonna be specifically about the evaluation tool and the evaluation process.
Gotcha.
So one of the, one of the first measures of progress that came to my mind was some sort of established professional development. So that would be one measure, you know, once Kevin has in play, you know, has in place some professional development for this, then that would be something he could then show to you as a board that, hey, this is the PD that we've got scheduled. This is what we're doing. This is how we're gonna train the teachers, make sure that they're ready for this transition to online learning. And so that would be right in that, that vein of it in increasing staff competency. I think another measure of progress would be maybe a detailed.
The one that I, yeah, go ahead. I was thinking a, a system, a, a document that outlines the system or the about delivery of the virtual environment, of the virtual learning, you know?
So do you think I, do you think I captured that with a detailed program description?
Um, maybe, I guess.
All right, how about this, including offices, systems of delivery.
Yeah, thank you.
Et cetera.
Yeah, Jake, did you make that a little larger on the screen? I gotta tell you, I'm leaning, I'm leaning forward my glasses and I'm still not getting it.
How's that?
Oh, much better. There we go. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
So to go on what Abby was saying, like just beyond the, the staff comprehension, do we want to say something like, we want to build capacity to increase virtual programming? And then that would be a measure would be more virtual options?
Okay.
Hi, Sarah, I agree with you. I think that one of the things that I'm wondering about is the virtual is gonna be here for a while. How we provide an option that's high quality for students so they can stay Penfield students and stay involved in athletics and extracurriculars and drama and everything else, but still have a virtual experience different than what they would get at one of the virtual academies. So I somehow, I think, I think we're getting close to describing what I was thinking, but it might be way more than what Kevin was thinking.
No, I, I was thinking like Gull Lake has a virtual option for their students.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking we create that type of opportunity for Penfield students to where they are still able to participate athletics and extracurricular, but for whatever the reason is, they can't come to in-school to do in-person learning, but they have that virtual option.
Hey, Kevin, does the E-2020 fit that bill already? Or we just look to do something a little more community-based for our, our Penfield community?
Yeah, we could use the E-2020, but that would also mean we have to have teachers to actually be there just for that reason. Just so that, because it's content-specific, we'd have to have a math teacher, science teacher, and they have to be for, able to support all of the kids that are asking for that opportunity, which is why Lakeview Superintendent made the, sent out his text message today asking if we're interested because he's not looking at high school because they have an alternative. He's asking a question about K-8. Because you still have to build it. And if we're talking K-8, E-2020, and I know Trevor could help me with this because of the previous district, it didn't go all the way down to kindergarten. It only went secondary with sixth grade up to 12. So that when you're talking about K-5, that is a totally different situation. But it's doable. It's just gotta be something that we're looking at the outcomes. Tammy?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit, too. One thing about E-2020 that you have to know is that it's self-paced. But you still have to have a teacher that's highly, you know, that's certified and highly qualified. And they have to, you know, at any given time, a student can be, get stuck. They can, a flag might happen. So if they get stuck somewhere, then there has to be somebody right away to be able to help them to get through that so they can move on. So E-2020 in and of itself is just a tool. There still would have to be a lot more to it. But there's also a lot of people that are not a big fan of that kind of virtual experience. If you look at Michigan Virtual, or if you look at what Gull Lake is doing, it is very different. It's, it's more of a classroom interactive. You've got the teacher that's there that interacts with those students. It's more classroom-like, I guess I'll say. It's not just self-paced, get on this thing, sit on the computer, do it until you're done. So there are different types of virtual learning that we'd have to look at.
Thank you, Tammy.
I think that, so that's the, I think that the way this is written, kind of described, that is the whole system around it. So it's partly the class itself, partly the structure of the teachers and the administrators of who's overseeing it and just the whole thing.
I have a question for that, too, on the E-2020 question. Currently, any students or even let's just say last year, because it's a little bit easier, any students that are in E-2020, wasn't there one teacher that kind of managed the E-2020 and it really didn't matter what subject they were taking? One teacher kind of administered the tests and, and so it's not like you need a Spanish teacher and a science teacher and a history teacher, or they were one teacher that managed basically our E-2020. Am I, am I mistaken?
So he was a social studies teacher by his degree. But when it came to students needing help with math and science and English, the other teachers had to help with those students so they could move forward. Trevor, if you could share?
Yeah, I, I had jumped off, actually, and, and I heard we were talking about E-2020, so I.
Yeah.
But if you could just, if you want to go back to what your question was, and then I can kind of circle back.
Yeah, when it comes to E-2020, there was only one person, I think it was Brent Crone, that was actually supporting the kids with their E-2020. But I just share with the members that you need to have a content-specific teacher to help the students if they're in math or if it's science or, or if it's English. So the question was, we, not the question, what I was trying to share was, we still had those teachers, and I think we called them teacher of record, that you still had to have a teacher of record that was for the content area. So if you could share if that was the case and how that worked?
I think you did fairly well. Every E-2020 course has to have a teacher of record, and we also used a mentor. The teacher of record can be the mentor. If that teacher of record is going to be doing things like taking attendance and doing the mentor logs or two-way interactions, in this case, we had, we had Mr. Crone, the mentor, an employee of the district, serving as a mentor and doing those day-to-day type interactions. Whereas the teacher of record was, was a, was a teacher that was available to the student for more course-specific type questions. So for example, if we're doing a, a math course, and we started getting some pretty high-level math questions, those, those students would still have a teacher of record that they could go to. And ideally, it would be during seminar with the high school schedule. So that's kind of how that works. Those students weren't seeing their teacher of record on a regular basis. It was just there for those deeper questions. Whereas Mr. Crone, the mentor, would have been there regularly for those students.
Thank you, Trevor.
Hey, Kevin, so do you envision the, the virtual environment being a, I don't want to say a one-on-one, but where the teacher of record would be seen by those students every day? Ver, is the E-2020 model where they might see the, the mentor every day, but not the teacher of record? Is that the difference we're talking about?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Tammy was sharing earlier when she said Gull Lake looked a little different from what another district would look for someone that has an alternative program. So yeah, the way I envision it is that there are gonna be four teachers or teachers, instead of having teachers of record, we actually have teachers that are available in order to support those students. But since it's going to be virtual, think of a college class type of, I'm teaching it and they're still virtual at home, but it is, I'm teaching all of them like it's a virtual situation.
Yeah, more like a synchronous model?
Yes. Like, like signing up for a college class and then showing up for that class, and there's the professor. Yep.
And then for the virtual academies that are out there, there's a couple of different models of those, too, for the public school virtual academies, right? So this is, this whole thing is partly you doing the research to look at all the different models out there and decide what one you want to go with.
Yes. Yes.
Go ahead, Abby, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I know the two virtual academy models for the younger children that I'm aware of. One of them, the children have to be at the computer and they have to click every few minutes to prove that they're still there. The other one is really more self-paced and they have opportunities to interact with their teacher, but they don't have to prove they're at the computer every few minutes. So it does, there are a couple, there are different ways to do that. I, and so I can see where they, this is gonna take a little while for Kevin to and his staff to kind of decide what they want to do, especially for the younger children.
Did you ask something, Jeff?
Abby kind of stole it. That's about the only thing I had. I appreciate everybody's questions. In additions to that was just a timeframe, and it sounds like we really can't put that out. I appreciate your due diligence and, and researching all the options we have for, available for virtual learning.
Jay? What I think I'd like to do is propose that we kind of come up with a rough framework tonight. And then between tonight and Thursday, Kevin can fine-tune these. And then on Thursday, when we get together for the training, we can take a look at these final proposed goals and make sure that they meet exactly what it is that you're looking for. Make sure that they're, they're gonna fit well with the evaluation that we just talked about. And so kind of keep this for the end of the training. But tonight, we can at least talk these goals out. We can get some ideas and some thoughts down, and then we can fine-tune them between now and Thursday, and then Thursday, we can put it to, put it to bed, as they say. Does that sound good?
Jay, if we could, I, I didn't want to, this is an opportunity since we're speaking specifically about academics here. And I know that Kevin has spoken before about the fact that his staff is being trained in the new science curriculum. But I was hoping that we might take a look at wrapping up, discussing with the board and with Kevin, the idea of wrapping up our efforts to improve our science scores as being another one of these performance goals. And I know it's gonna be a little bit more difficult because of, of COVID, but perhaps more training, not the same curriculum that's being done right now, but perhaps offering more training to teachers so that they can be, have a good opportunity to improve their their wealth of knowledge, maybe K-6 type of training for at least one per, one per grade level, something of that nature where the science and improvement of our science scores has to happen. It may not happen when we come here, but at least it could happen the following year because we do more training. So that would be my suggestion for an additional outcome that we try to boost that, that after that's already been done.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything in this section? And again, we're, I would recommend to table this discussion when we're done today, as Jay has requested, to move it to, to finalizing this on Thursday. So if anybody has anything else in there, we can move on.
All right, thank you. So Area Two was around the district goal statement, we will improve and promote effective two-way communication with internal and external stakeholders. So this was your communication, community engagement area focus. The priority objectives in this area focus were choose and implement common classroom messaging app between staff and families. Develop and implement a district marketing plan to showcase Penfield schools. Develop and implement a district marketing plan to showcase Penfield schools. Develop a plan to use multiple social media platforms for district mic communication. And create engagement opportunities for stakeholders in the community. Kevin chose to focus in on the improvement of facility, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, to create engagement opportunities for stakeholders in the community. But Kevin, want to give us a little bit more on why this area and what your plans are?
Yeah, so we started with some of the, the virtual ways of trying to interact and communicate, engage those opportunities with the community. But we're getting ready to start going into where there's a restrictions are going to be released. And there are going to be more opportunities for how and what exactly we can do to engage the community. Well, there's been some discussion around the bond. And a lot of it went around engaging the senior citizens in our community more so. And then there were others that said we need to engage with the business, support our stakeholders and engaging them. So this is more about that community engagement and how we go about doing that. Well, that's why I create engagement opportunities for stakeholders in the community. It's going to be more fine-tuned as to exactly who it is that I'm building the communication structure for. And then given reasons why, so that it could be measured if we actually achieve that. And I say that as the superintendent. Let me just start with the senior citizens. Some of the things that came up was maybe there's certain passes that we give them that allow them to come to certain events and recognize the fact that they no longer have kids in our district. But how we reach out and get them to come into the district. There's walking, they, I was told they used to walk during the winter in the middle school around the square. Well, how do we go about actually inviting them in and getting them a time that's not so late that the custodial staff is trying to clean around them? Those, those are, that's a, that's a targeted group. But my intent is to see if that's the group that we're working toward. And if it's going to help with the, the community as far as the stakeholders? Or do we also add the business leaders in the community? And doing the same thing with getting them to the table to come in? Because there's been some opportunities and conversation about how we engage them also. We ask them once for donations for the yearbook, another time for fundraisers, another time for a different fundraiser, another time when they're the parent of a child and it's a fundraiser. So how many times are we asking them about fundraisers instead of just saying, we appreciate you and coming in? There's, I mentioned about the luncheon for the retirees. There's also a luncheon for business stakeholders to where they come in and we show appreciation for their support in our community. But it also gives them a chance to see the kids and the kids to be able to share ideas on how they feel. It may also be interviews that kids get, mock interviews that they have at the high school. But those are the ideas in which I'm saying can be placed into this goal.
I have a question on that one, specifically you say about the passes. We already provide passes for seniors for sporting events, for free entry to all sporting events. Is there something in addition that you are?
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's concessions, maybe it's a.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, or, or maybe special seating to where there's a special area. Or maybe it's this time they bring a family member along with them to where it's great grandkids or, or grandkids or their son or daughter to where it's like, you know, I don't have to go to try to enjoy this event by myself. I get to go with somebody who's from the family, should I say, from the community, who actually have a connection with the school.
Is this also something, and I know like obviously it's not something that we can say, but like, is there, I know that you do a lot of communications, obviously with other school superintendents. Is there a way that, and I don't know if this is, this works, but these passes, these senior passes, like I know, for example, I'm going to use sporting as an example. Like if I get a season pass for my family, it only works at home games. Is there a way to, to work with the other, either IA or area schools? So if we have like some type of sporting event, let's say I'm, you know, the 65-year-old grandma that comes, I show my pass, and then I get into that game, it's free, for free as well. Is that something that we could explore?
That is something to explore, because we started doing the same thing with Kelloggsville High School when I was in Grand Rapids. And it was a district that was about the same size as we have with our high school. But that is another one of those pieces to explore. It is, it can't be small picture, we think in big picture, and then being able to measure it. And I think Jay would even say that whatever we come up with, there has to be a way to measure it. Because we can make all kinds of big pictures, and I've got the big ideas that are out there. How do we bring it down to where we can measure, did we actually succeed at that goal? And I say we, meaning myself, of course.
Kevin, do you feel part of this goal, would part of your goal then be like three to five new engagements, reaching 40 to 100 new people, or some numbers like that, when you put the final goal together for us?
Yes, and, and actually saying what the, let's say it's an event. And then what is the goal of that event? And to, to measure that receiving 50 to 100 senior citizens attending this certain event and being recognized. So that's how we would measure it, actually coming up with what that event is. Or having three different events and saying from that, a combination of, and how do we measure how many? Because we're really just trying to gain that involvement.
Right, so for you, for, to come and, coming back with us, you're going to just have some broad, since you don't really know exactly what yet, you're going to have some broad goals on about how many and about how, how, what your reach is going to be, what you're targeting.
Yes, and then once, once the board says this is that, that goal and that target, then I'll be able to come back to board and say, here's one of those events that I was talking about that's going to help meet that target.
You want us to come up with a target?
No, 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 I'm going to come up with the event, the event. But the target is going to be recommended because it's going to say by December or by November, it's got to be spelled out in a SMART goal type of way. And then I'm just going to be informing the board what those events are and why they're coming up, because it's targeted right at that goal.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else here for this District Two goal statement? All right. So District Three goal statement, we will improve facilities and the efficiency of operations. So this is in our facilities and operations area. The priority objectives in this area, enhance safety and security in all facilities. Develop process for implementing improvements from the facility assessment plan. Develop short and long-term goals regarding improving efficiency of operations. Developing purchasing replacement plan for buses, equipment and technology. This area, Kevin focused on the development process for implementing improvements for the facility assessment plan. So what were your thoughts on this one, Kevin?
So we, we have a facility assessment that has been done for the district. And there are quite a few things that could come up in a bond and that could be utilized to actually make that point for implementing improvements. Well, as the previous board had mentioned, if a bond does not pass, what's Plan B? Can't just say, well, we tried and we didn't get there. So Plan B is more of what this is. It is still having a plan based on the revenue that comes in for our district. And the, oh gosh, capital, capital improvements, budget that we have, that we've kind of, that we kind of put in small increments of funds. So that when they're like a rainy day fund, so we've been putting in to where there has to be a Plan B that says we have to fix certain things or, or should I say improve certain things in the district? Or they're going to get to the point where it's going to be more costly. I give an example is the press box out at the football field. That thing I had, oh gosh, Bernie Larson said it was there since 1954. Now that's what he told me when I went to the Lions Club meeting. But he's going, yeah, we put that thing together and put it up. Well, right now, we're just doing certain things to it, which is like a Band-Aid on a gaping wound, before it rots out. There has to be something that we have planned as a Plan B. Because a bond would say, yeah, the issue is going about fixing things while we're trying to move to see if a bond is something that our community would move towards. So that goal is about a Plan B. So developing a process for implementing improvements from the facility assessment plan, that's more about Plan B, because Plan A is if we had a bond that could pass. And we have moved in that direction, okay? Does that, questions about, I mean, and just spelling out exactly what those are and, and how we go about it in a three to five-year plan?
Believe it or not, I have no comments.
Thank you, Abby.
Anybody else?
Okay, District Four, I'm sorry, District Four, Goal Four, District Goal Statement Four. We will create a safe and positive learning environment with high expectations shared by all. This is your fourth area in learning environment. Your priority objectives there, develop a school culture that encompasses the whole child approach to learning. Make learning and communication accessible and equitable to all. Define roles and expectations while providing support for all stakeholders. Ensure students and staff feel safe and comfortable in risk-taking in their learning environment. Kevin focused this one around ensuring students and staff feel safe and comfortable in risk-taking in their learning environment. All right, Kevin, what were your thoughts here?
Well, I've actually started down this road, but I haven't really put my teeth into it yet to where there are building level.
Am I the only one not hearing Kevin?
Uh-oh, is that me?
I think it's just you, Jay, I hear him.
Oh, I say, did I blink out there somewhere?
Can you hear me, Jay? I think Jay's lost volume.
Yeah, I think we lost Jay. Okay.
Is this on my end?
Yeah.
It's on, it's on your end, Jay.
Okay, give me a second.
Yes, sir. Give him a second to.
Sure.
All right, see, I'm not as familiar with the, with the Google. Hold on, I think I got it here.
Jay, your best bet may be, well, I have to text him, I guess he's not hearing me, is he? He can go out and come back in, that usually fixes it.
I can send him that text.
That'll work. Although it looks like he just left.
I'm gonna say, we're all sitting here, we're all sitting here and just quiet, so he doesn't know if he can hear us or not, because no one's saying anything.
Yeah.
Oh.
Big Mac, double cheeseburger.
All right.
Fries.
Yep, when he said, he's got a.
All right, I'll log off, log back out, we'll see if that does it, so I'll be right back.
All right.
I'm not going to find out.
So can we take an official two-minute break?
Do you need a recess, Abby?
I need a recess, yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Actually, Abby, I think the, I think the one thing that we may want to do or look at in terms of talking with Kevin is about the fund balance as it relates to those investments. Because it'll be good for us to give Kevin, if, if that's, you think would be a good idea, good for us to give Kevin some kind of guidance in terms of the fund balance. If we're going to be spending a hundred thousand or three, four hundred thousand dollars on different projects, what kind of, what kind of fund balance do you want to have that we'll give him for, for retaliation? Unless, of course, the state increases our funding, which is entirely possible, but you know what I mean? That with the fund balance that we have right now, how much do you want to think about taking that, in order to do that kind of work? So I think.
I think that would be a good finance treasure orientation for Dana and Jeff. We should do a whole thing on that sometime, and Gina can help us with that.
Okay, I am back.
Welcome back.
Thank you, okay. So we are in this area of ensuring students and staff feel safe and comfortable in risk-taking in their learning environment. So Kevin, where were you on that?
Yeah, I, I've actually started some of this process, but I hadn't put my teeth into it as much as I would like yet. As we're doing, I started out by doing some teacher talks, going around and meeting with teachers in their buildings and asking them, if we are at point B and we want to move in a progressive manner up to L M O P, we want to move in that direction, moving our kids learning up, what would they recommend and what would they suggest? And a number of the teachers started sharing that there were so many things that were coming at them in so many different directions that they weren't able to focus on student learning. And so I asked them to give me more information on that. So it was a situation in which they felt like we were handing them, and I say we, because I'm, I'm in central office also, that we were giving them things to teach instead of allowing them to be creative and innovative so that they were able to be risk-takers when it comes to what students need to learn in order to be successful. Not just in the classroom, but when they leave and start going into the world itself. So at the elementary level, it sounded like I'm doing 24 objectives have been sent in my direction, and I'd much rather teach just these 20 because I've talked with the teachers whose kids are coming to me and I've talked with the teachers who my kids are going to go to. So that alignment and that conversation came to a more of a commitment, not a buy-in, to where teachers were committed to what needs to be taught, the communication that needs to occur to add transitional educational learning. And that the building principals become the instructional leaders to where their thought is not much as just manage, but it should be 20% of their time to manage the building, 80% of the time with instructional leadership. So we've hired those administrators into the district. It is my intent to move into the next phase in that transition as to how do we go from where we are with teachers believing and feeling like they can teach what they feel based on their data that they're looking at, to now allowing them to make some mistakes and not getting their hands slapped for it. Which means they have to feel the support that they're going to make these changes in what's being taught, the actual content. So in order for that to occur, there's work that I have to do with. So in order for that to occur, there's work that I have to do with building principles. That allow them to become the instructional leaders. And not just the managers of the building. Yes, we still gotta keep students safe. Yes, we still have to go from one class to another. Yes, we still have to take them to where they have to eat, and we have to protect them before school and after school and get them on the bus. But in the classroom. The building administrators have to echo a message that allows teachers. To be innovative and creative in what's being taught. So that, that's why I put on this goal, that is ensure students and staff feel safe. It's not about someone that's stranger danger or running drills. Because someone is running through the building with a weapon. It's not that, it's the feeling comfortable with taking a risk. Based on the learning environment, meaning the teaching.
Okay.
I would, I would like to ask Craig or Sarah, being teachers. How does that?
I, I just wanna, like, when you found that they, that they felt that they weren't able, that they were in this rigid thing. Is it about the number of standards, i.e. they need to create power standards to narrow in? Or is it about the curriculum they've adopted, say the Lucy Cawkins units are too rigid and they feel like they have to do what's in that?
It was. Where you can have. How can I say? You can, you could put on your plate about fifteen things that you can balance and try to keep it going. But if you give me eight to do, I'm going to be more targeted with reaching those eight. So I'm gonna be in mastery with eight and coverage with fifteen. So instead of just covering the information, we wanted them to master the information, which is like you said with power standards. Eight that I can master, instead of fifteen where I'm just covering it. Because I've been told I, I have to teach these fifteen, or I can't give them credit for this class. That is not true. That is not true. I can go down the street, down ninety-four, to where there's five and six of those objectives being taught. And those students are still getting credit. So look toward teachers to say, based on my profession. Based on my work with the students who've come through here. Here are some things, instead of these fifteen, I can really get rid of these seven. And still have students be just as successful, if not more successful than where they are now.
Then I would like the idea, the idea of the power standards then that would go with the, in the strategic plan about the alignment too. Because then they'd be looking at, you know, if this grade's gonna cover this, then we can focus on this type of thing.
Yes.
My, my only thing that I would add would be that I have heard the same thing from faculty before we even got here, Kevin. That that was a major concern. The other thing that I heard was that there was a feeling by many of them. That there were a lot of other things that were getting in the way as well. So the, the issue with. At some point in the past, mind you, this is before you came on. Was that there was way too much emphasis on computers. And there was not enough opportunity for them to show some, show some creativity. And I think that's what Sarah's getting to, is that we, we. That, and, and that was that, was that the, that the professional development wasn't creative either. In terms of giving them additional information. And that's probably the reason why I suggested what I did before, is that it seemed like a little new standards or new training. That there wasn't a lot of additional. Means of helping them to be creative and improving their science force. And so, so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, guys, for your input.
All right, so any other inputs on any of these four areas that we talked about tonight?
I have one general overarching question. All of these goals say each year for the next three to five years. So I just wanted to clarify if Kevin's thinking that these goals would be his goals for the next five years. Or if each one of them might have a different timeline depending on the times and, and goals that he gives us. Or are these, or are we supposed to be just doing goals for this one year?
So.
Or six months.
Yeah, so, so those goals. The superintendent performance goal is written broad term for like three to five years. But the actual goal, which is where, I'll take the last one that we're on. Which is ensuring students and staff feel safe, that's through this year. But for the three to five years, the superintendent's performance goal. That, that is more of what comes from. The actual district goal statement. So yes, that should be written more so to where it is. By November. By November, the, you know, so when it's written. So yeah, it shouldn't be three to five years. It should be to where we're talking about this year. That was written when I had statements for all, all the priority objectives. That was, yeah, I didn't go back and change it as much as I went back and changed all the priority go, objectives. But when it went to one, then we're talking about just this, this year.
Okay, I just wondered if you were suggesting that these are the four that you want to have in place for the next three to five years or not? But I'm hearing it clearly.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question. Thank you, Abby. I actually knew that one, when it was like four or five under each one.
Okay, thank you.
Jay, can I ask, is that normal? What, visit these once a year?
Yeah, so this is our focus for the year, and then we're gonna get together, you know, or, I mean, you'll get together. You don't necessarily need me next year. But I'd be more than happy to come again next year if you'd like. But you'll get again, you know, you'll get together again next year in January. You'll think about how that last evaluation went, the progress that was being made. And then, you know, do these goals still make sense? Or, you know, are we pretty happy with the progress we made towards these goals? Do we now need to move forward with, you know, some, some new goals for the next year? And then we just, you know, rinse and repeat. Throughout this year, we'll be getting regular updates from Kevin as to the progresses being made towards these goals. So that when we get to the evaluation, the actual evaluation in November. We're all gonna have a pretty good idea of where we are, because we've been talking about it throughout the year along the way. Whether that is, you know, informally in his regular updates to you through your weekly or bi-weekly announcements. Or if it's a more formal process where he's actually doing. Formal presentations at a board meeting for not only your benefit, but also for the community staff and everybody else to see as well.
Okay, and then one more question before we go. I am looking at our strategic plan right now, Kevin. Goal area four, communication, community engagement. Did you, would you like to? Add any goals there?
I'm sorry, say again what you're looking at, Jeff?
The strategic, our strategic plan, which is.
Yep.
Goal area four.
Yep.
Communication. Would you like to make any recommendations on goals in that area? There's nothing. On your submitted goals. As far as some goals for communication with community. On our strategic, strategic plan is choose and implement a common classroom messaging app. Between staff and families, develop and implement a district marketing plan to showcase Penfield schools, develop and plan a. And use multi-social media platforms as district-wide communication, create engage opportunities for stakeholders.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeff. Yeah, for that one, he has, he has the, this was the second one here. He's got, and create the engagement opportunities for stakeholders in the community. That was when he chose to focus in that area.
Is that what you were asking, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, so was there a different one? That you think should be added, or I'm sure Jay would have asked the same question. Or is there other, based on those priority objectives?
I guess what I'm getting at, I wanna touch on the topic of communication with the community. You and I discussed that this week. I, I gotta stop right there and say, I thought this week with communication is absolutely awesome. I think we need to put something in there as a goal to continue all this communication that our community is loving right now. Knowing what's going on. Abby, can you help me there, or?
Would it be, would it be, I think what Jay may be putting in now, or would it be? Another. Priority that goes under that communication?
I think you picked the right section, but I think that maybe we're thinking in addition to the business owners and. Senior citizens, people that don't have kids in school anymore, there's this other communication area with the. Penfield District. Community, the students and parents. That we've been working on, that we have been working on. And, and so maybe that's a different goal under that one. I don't know if we're talking about an additional one or instead of, what do you think?
So if, if I could just, if I could just jump in for a quick sec here. So when we talk about the evaluation tool on Thursday, you'll see that there's, there's clear objectives in the evaluation tool around communication. And one of those is around community feedback. And it's not community feedback about Kevin's performance, it's community feedback and the systems that Kevin has in place. For getting community feedback as it relates to the progress of the district, the goals of the district, things of that nature. So I don't know if we need a specific goal for that. It's addressed in the evaluation instrument. And it's definitely within your purview to, to say to Kevin, hey, you know, just a heads up, we're really gonna be focused in on an area of communication in your evaluation. Because we really think that you've made some progress, we want to see continued progress. And so when you get to that evaluation, you, you can definitely focus in on that. And Kevin now knows between now and then, he's gonna need to continue to work in that area. Because you've just, you've just said it, Jeff, and I'm getting other nods from other members of the board. It sounds like this. Communication thing is definitely something that we want to see Kevin continue to work on. And so I think it's addressed sufficiently enough within the instrument. And after we talk more about it on Thursday night, if you think differently than when we talk about these goals at the end of the meeting. And then we can, you know, make some modifications if you think there's some additional things you want to get in there.
So it is on our, thank you, Jay, for the clarification. It is on our strategic plan. I guess if I could, you know, make more focus, on a side note, we did talk this week and, and we're very. On the same page of where communication and, and updating stuff needs to go. So that was my, that was my one question. Thank you both for.
Maybe when we do the superintendent evaluation, we can talk a little bit on that section about how the board could customize. The evidence or the criteria to meet each of those.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yeah, if there's some, if there's some, if there's some evidence that you would like from Kevin around the areas of communication. Some, some specific things that you would like to see, then we just need to talk about that. And this is the perfect time to do it at the beginning of the cycle, so that he knows he needs to keep track of these things and report back to you throughout the year. On these things, so that when we get to that evaluation at the end of the year, you know, we know where we stand.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
You bet. So I'm going to take this document that I've been taking notes on right now, I'm gonna save this to send it to Kevin. And for Thursday, Kevin, the things that I'm looking for from you is to clean up the language a little bit, to make sure that we understand that these are yearly goals. So to address those questions that Abby had, and then to make sure that we have established smart goals for each of these areas with clear measurables. So that we know exactly what it is that the board's going to use to determine the progress that you, that you're making towards these goals.
Got it.
Anything else for me tonight?
Doesn't look like it. Jay, I just want to say thank you for the, for the conversation.
That's right, that's right. Well, I will see you all on Thursday night, and you know, we're just gonna go with the headset on Thursday night. And that way, hopefully, we won't lose any of the, any of the audio or anything. So thanks a lot, everybody. Have a wonderful night. I will see you on Thursday.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
All right, so at this time, I would request. For a motion to table this. Till Thursday.
I second that.
I need a motion first. That was a request. Dana has made a motion to table this discussion until Thursday.
Thank you.
I second that.
Tim, with a second, any discussion? Sarah, if you would, please.
Okay, Craig Corpola.
Hi.
Dana, well, Jenny?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Abby?
Yeah.
Sarah, yes.
Thank you, guys. Six yeas on that. This motion, or this discussion is tabled to, to Thursday. Thank you. Moving on, administrative reports, Kevin, six point oh one, finance expenditure report.
Yeah, so each one of these administrative reports. That as you get a chance that you read through, and I'm, I'm gonna add them all together here, Jeff, that's six point oh one through. Six point eleven. When you read through it, if there's something that you would like more information on, then please let me know. Because I could have the person that created the report to actually report out on that piece. What I do is I read through them, and there are some good things that are in there. And I try to bring that out and say, hey, now I need you to come and share with the board. But get a little more in-depth with what that piece is. So those reports have a lot of great information in them. But I want you to know it's more of a reading and then looking to see if there's something you have a question about. So we can bring that administrator back to share up.
Yes, thank you. Great information there. Just want to remind the public that those are attachments on the agenda in Board Docs for anybody that wants to view any of those documents. Thank you, Kevin, for that. So moving on, seven point oh one, communications from the public. Did we have anybody join us?
We had one more person had put in, but I do not see her here, so maybe you'll get her next time.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Tammy. All right, eight point oh one, superintendent comments.
So I have only one comment that I will share out tonight. It is a, this is Dr. Martin Luther King's holiday. And I tell you, my wife actually pointed out this Facebook post to me today. And I'd like to share it with all of you. So it goes, people ask me, probably more often than they should. Where I stand politically and during times like this. How I'm feeling. I think as a biracial person in America, this answer is pretty obvious. Though I always answer the same way. I don't boo my own team. It's extremely easy to point fingers in tough times. So my MLK quote today is meant to inspire action in all of us. I recognize that this is something I need to improve upon. We must develop and maintain the capacity to forgive. He who is devoid of the power to forgive is devoid of the power to love. There is some good in the worst of us and some evil in the best of us. When we discover this, we are less prone to hate our enemies. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I'm very proud that this was posted by my son. And everyone just wants to say thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you for that, sir. Nine point oh one, board comments.
I wanted to say, I wanted to just kinda give a little shout out to Jack Boyd and Cam Riechel. I think that the videos they put together, the information they're providing for the incoming freshmen is just absolutely spectacular. They are exactly what it means to be a panther and have pride. They have pride of place. They are trying to build a community, and I just think they're both incredible young men. And I just wanted to give them kudos for what they're doing.
Thank you, Dana. Anyone else?
I have. I do have a thank you from an eleventh grader. Who has struggled greatly, both physically and mentally for the last, since August. And she just gives her thanks to the board for letting her go back to the classroom. And she just, um, gives her thanks to the board for letting her go back to the classroom. She said she's failing as a virtual learner and she's especially happy that she only has to go back three days a week. Cause she is not sure right now that she can tolerate five days a week after what we experienced. So this is a, a very happy customer and I thought I'd let you guys know about that.
Thank you, Abby.
Hey, uh, real quick, Ruth Austin, who was our public person, was not admitted in. And she is here now, so if you want to, uh, hear what she has to say, she is on.
I would ask the board, does anybody have an objection to go back to comments from the public? I will take everyone's head shake except for not being able to see Craig's as no objection. Ruth, uh, welcome. Ruth, go ahead whenever you're ready. I do not hear anything on my end. Am I the only one?
Yes.
I see her there and she's unmuted, but I'm not.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, I guess this is our chat second strike, so, oh, now she just muted. Hang on, maybe she's trying. Yeah, no.
And she's out.
Yeah, well, if she comes back in, we'll kind of keep an eye on it here. It could be the old have to go out and back in to make the sound work.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone else? Um, at this time, I would like to first and foremost, thank all the Penfield staff. Um, your hard work is, uh, is noticeable. Um, even those that aren't at school, um, those that are at a vacant school right now, six through twelve. Um, we have, uh, obviously a very small, close-knit community and, uh, um, we see you. Uh, we see all the hard work. This is a lot of stuff to do, to do in a timely, timely manner. Uh, Kevin, I'd like to thank you, um, your administration staff. Um, secondly, at this time, um, little shout out to, uh, Dawn Forten, um, from the board. Um, our respects to you, ma'am, and the Forten family. Uh, Dawn has lost a family member. That's why she's not able to attend tonight. Um, Dawn, the entire Forten family, um, we love you and we'll see you soon. Uh, last but not least, it was discussed or, or touched a couple of times, um, for those in the, you know, viewing. Um, January twenty-first, this, uh, this Thursday, I have requested, um, a workshop for us board. Uh, for those of you don't know, it was Kevin touched on earlier on, on, uh, retired board members. Um, we're constantly in training, trying to improve ourselves, prove our knowledge. Um, not only in, in how to run a meeting, but, um, how to look at the finances, how to look at, uh, all of Kevin's, uh, requests and suggestions. Um, so I have, um, requested a meeting, uh, a workshop on Thursday. Um, at that time, we're going to discuss, uh, uh, board goals. Um, Penfield Board has never done goals. I talked to everybody and everybody thought it was a very good idea to, to do board goals. So we're going to discuss board goals. And then, uh, Jay Bennett's going to, uh, join us again and, uh, go over our first training of superintendent. Uh, evaluation, which is a year-long process for us to know what exactly we're evaluating and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to clear up some, some stuff there, let you guys know what's going on. Um, a lot of hard work going on this week and getting ready for the twenty-fifth, so, uh, um, I appreciate it. If nobody's got anything else. All right, ten point oh one. I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Seconded by Abby. Sarah, go ahead, please.
Okay, Dana.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Tim?
Yes.
Abby?
Yeah.
Sarah is a yes. Craig?
Hi.
Six yays, this, uh, motion is passed to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight and we will see you Thursday.